It's a lovely spring meeting of the town centre. We needed the weather to go within, with our lack of spring weather. But in which case, have we got any points for us?
Yes, really, I apologize, we cancelled our live.
I know the town for the front day that you're on the way. Having a fresh lift, which you're feeling everything. Because they're late to live in France, their intention is to be here, so we've paid out bread and we're happy to agree then, apologies.
Oh, very good.
All right, okay, declarations, we're interested in any on given that. That we've got an interest in most people have done their decorations and interested in something outside of the norm, which I can't see if there is.
No.
But that's fine. Can you just have a look at the minutes of the last meeting? And check that they're happy with them before we agree them and sign them off?
Yeah, I struggled to find them, but you'd sent them along the confidential path, didn't you? Had we sublimed all that, or no?
No.
Um, I think you have done it wrong, Paula wasn't here, so substitution could fall.
Okay, anyway, I was almost going to send a thing saying I haven't seen them and I can't find them. And I found them, yeah.
That's everybody's, not your fault at all. But we've got them, it was something on there if you wanted to question. They rarely do. I thought they were okay. Now, we got the, we took this meeting to remember last time that next year we'll do, celebrate Buckingham and the Great Fire at Buckingham, which is a good bit. We can work on that in the coming year. Draw whatever people asked in their ideas in the town about it. But at least we're doing it within an event, so that's fine. In which case, we're moving on to budgets. Oh, can we perhaps agree a minute?
Yeah.
All those in favour of the minutes?
Sorry.
Look at that, you know, absolutely unanimous. Marvellous, but yes. Want just have a quick look at those and see if some of you want that. A few explanations with them, please sir.
Thank you, the dog show four, two, one, three on page four of twenty nine, five down from the bottom. Can you remind me what we bought, because that's obviously the year that we didn't do it, because it was cancelled. I can't remember, we bought with our money.
So which page is it?
So page four of twenty nine and it's five down from the bottom, or five up, sorry.
So which is?
Four, two, one, three.
You are about twenty seven percent.
Hundred, so hundred and forty three pounds was the amount.
Yeah.
What was it for? Do you recall that anything? It was September last week, so I may have to go and check and then I can get back to you.
I don't know.
It was something that wasn't refundable, because obviously we cancelled just a few games.
We didn't leave the food, which we already have those.
They were probably not.
Yeah, you can get. I'm not sure that it was surprise, because I think it was something else.
I think it was more entertainment.
Yeah.
Might as well do it, I think it was one that that didn't come out that far, so it might have been more than that. We can check and get back to you.
Yeah.
Then I'll tell everyone that we've not put the spend on.
Thank you very much.
Is there any council in there that members want to question? You've got opportunity, is your budget?
Not just.
Not just. Thank you, that was a long answer. And that's tightly, you're cheered. Beth Catridge, your matches has a report in the game, but Beth Catridge, who's ever been on that night? Okay, okay.
So it's that time again, it's getting into competition and we have to enter by the thirty fourth of this month. And it's the same, so it's the same format as previous years, so it would be that we enter in the Kales Cup. And for last time, we obviously, members asked officers to write to best committee and ask for the feedback, which we've done. And also request a list of previous competition winners, so in the report you can see that and some of the advice they sent, so more quality, a more detailed qualitative map. And things that are clearly marked on there to better, so for the judges to.
Have more information.
Yes, have more information. But the recommendations are that the town organise a, I mean, genuinely near the start of Beth Catridge, because you look, they start judging from the thirty of June, it's about the eighth of July. So it's just a little bit of a coming up to say, you know, keep everything nice and tidy and be a part of that. And also that the business categories that are into the annual bucking the blue in contest to encourage the local businesses to keep their shop frontages looking nice and pretty.
Yeah.
Thank you, Margaret, and then Lisa.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I fully support that we should go ahead with it again, I think it's a good thing to do. However, I noticed on the way in, we've got a funny little basket outside here and it's looking rather sad. And we need to be modelling being best kept as town council, if we want other people to keep their frontages looking good, we need to make sure. And I prefer that to be removed than in the state it's in at the moment.
Well, propose that.
Pardon?
Well, I propose we remove that.
Well, either remove it or somebody, I mean, somebody knows what they're doing, sorts it out, refreshes it.
And I just, I've got used to it, but.
I think so. Please, somebody tell me, it looks lovely, I don't think it did.
Right, Lisa.
Thank you, so I noticed on, so I'm at page eight of twenty nine, four point one point two at the top. So when they say about the laminated information sheets, given detailed background, do they mean on the maps that we give out generally or just for the judges for that day?
For the, for the, they'll be a map, they'll be a main format they asked for. And one side would be the majority of things in the town that we're going to do a little bit more of an enlarged one for heart, because there's so much criteria in that context. And the laminated information sheets know that's just so, with their judging criteria, we can go, this is, so bottom heart notice board, for example, this is what we do. There are evidence of this and this is how it promotes it and finger gaze them. So we're putting almost like an information fact sheet to go with the map, so then.
Just for them?
Yeah, oh yes, for them to get the detail for them.
Thank you, and the next one was still on underneath it, four point one point three. And we should be quite fine with that, shouldn't we? Because we've got like the charitable organisations around table and things like that that do things. So just basically keeping an eye on the organisations within our town and saying, if you're going to do something, let us know. Because then we can include it for social media and stuff like that, so yeah, be good to evidence that.
Thank you, are you happy with that?
I was just going to say, yeah, absolutely. I think one of the things that we've learnt from this is not that we weren't doing these things before, but that the. There was an expectation that wasn't necessarily that clear, that you needed to evidence in more detail in your animation pack. So a lot of this is just about us internally making sure that there's more detail and evidence in there, and in the only information pack that we're sending out. And but yeah, absolutely, so coming out of lots of ideas, if anyone thinks of any other ideas of, you think of a community group, oh, I know that, that could go down litter picks or planted tulips or, you know, did anything to help look at the town. Which is a nice idea, isn't it? It's like getting all the evidence in for.
You're actually very like that, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much, ladies.
I've got three other people, Ryan and the mayor, listen.
Thank you, Sharon, I'd like to second Margaret's idea. I think that we should spruce up the town, do anything we can to win this.
I'm sure we agree that the mayor is going to be doing all the boring.
I'm sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's agreed, you're all right, someone.
Oh, it was unanimous.
Yeah.
I'm late, you get volunteered for all sorts of stuff.
I know you are.
Furthermore, I think it's a one, absolutely brilliant idea, right? You know, having a litter pick, I saw our friends at Mates Morton doing it the other day. They're out with a couple of councillors there, that sort of councillor Hardcastle there and councillor Cummings, both picking up, picking up litter. I think it's a wonderful idea. Is there going to be a timetable around this as well? I presume that the officers will have that timetable, not the hand, but will there be?
I presume so.
To when the litter pick sessions?
I think, I think I said within the report that timing.
Oh, right.
Comes on time, I think, sort of states the state that we're going through.
I've got.
I don't have a specific timetable, but it might be something we can include for members to note.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other dates, the one thing that I just said, if you want the briefing note, then now.
Yeah.
The date of when, so there's a reminder for us all.
We do get the end of the week email anyway, don't we? We round up what's happening, what's happening, so we get that.
Perfect, yeah.
I thought it was just your like calendar thing.
Oh, thank you, chairman. Okay, before they arrive, or if it can be done by the end of this month, get rid of those little signs on the bypass with the pizza. I've London Village, Linden village, if you want the bypass bit, the signs with an arrow to the pizza place in Burley Peace where the shops are. And there are three of them, two on the, one before the first entrance where the school is, and the second, second entrance to Burley Peace, and the third opposite your house. The third opposite your house pointed to the direction where the pizza shop houses.
Hey, we'll see what we can do about it.
They can have it mag or we.
Well, we can.
You've got polish there, I put me on that.
Polish on it, so thank you for raising that, and it will look, they've gone, it will create a better appearance, right?
Yeah.
Lucy.
I was wondering if maybe to encourage engagement from local shop fronts and stuff, we could run a little contest? To kind of, is that one of the things on there and I haven't read it?
Yeah, the second recommendation, so we have Buckingham and Bloom contest, which is sort of to do with having nice sort of flowers, hanging baskets and front garden displays. And the idea is that we'll introduce and categories for businesses, but we will be, we'll, we'll come up with some quite careful terms of reference, that means that people. And if, you know, they've got no space, they haven't got any furniture, they can still do a window display or something like that and take part.
And the other idea was about involving local schools. I'm not quite sure how yet, but I'm sure like, because it says about evidencing that we've gone the extra mile. So maybe like getting the young people involved, I'm thinking that primary school kids, get involved in planting stuff.
Some of the things that have been included before, Nina was, I'm saying Nina, my six minutes, she worked a really hard bit, and that is so real help.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of it is. And she, I know that she has evidence, even when the children are planting daffodils and bulbs up in the field, and they've done a little competition.
Yeah, so like moving all that sort of stuff as evidence in our, in our pack.
That's a really good idea, because we, we've had quite a few true gardens, don't we?
Yeah.
And different things that we've done throughout the year, which is all part of.
And that's the thing, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, hanging baskets and flowers and like Buckingham and Bloom, we can say, well, this is, this is what we're doing for the future. You know, this is, this is the stuff that we're planting for the future as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I thought the report, it's fantastic, and I appreciate the conversation that we've taken a fresh look at it this year. To see why, and what other people, I did agree, obviously, to put some time into the research, to find out what other people are doing that we weren't.
Yeah.
Which is encapsulated in this report, which we must thank them for. And but we'll be in a better place going forward, nothing need be guaranteed to receive a prize, but I do believe the town clerk are quite keen to have one. So we should, my expression, I mean, she's quite likely to have the prize, and hopefully we can deliver that. My only comment would be, I think we must recognise that we won't be mowing all the verges of that this time. We, we took the decision not to carry on with the contract, but further agrees, which is in the environment committee, I'm correct. And we must make a note of that when we're talking to them.
For sure.
Because, and it might be worth some knowing quite what's going to happen, because I know the boys have done all the mowing up to the end of contract. And we had our communication to tell us that they've done that work up to where they've gone. So now whatever from that day is Buckinghamshire Council, so I mean, we didn't need to be mindful of that.
We will be having on that information sheet, just, and we will have any briefings before that to let the judges know. It does say in the criteria that judges will not judge us on things out of our control. But it's just, it's always good to have it in back of mind in front of them to say, actually, we don't maintain this, we don't own this, we won't do this because of that.
Yeah. So.
It's part of six point one, isn't it?
It was a decision we took in another committee.
Yeah, six point one.
Yeah, and so firstly reminded them, Margaret.
Yes, thank you, just to say on a positive note, I seem to have seen Buckinghamshire council teams out a lot more in recent weeks. And dealing with the Hartlands Park particularly, but I've seen a lot more activity than I used to see. There's a particular route I take quite frequently and I've, I just have seen them a lot more and that's encouraging.
And lots for the river, get the trees out, they've got in the river on their side, yeah.
And getting their money's worth a little bit then, aren't we, so?
Thanks for doing that, I think it ought to see what other people are doing and the half and the thirty hours.
Yeah.
Andy.
Yeah, I was just going to ask whether we have any feedback from our friends in the big place about our not being content to doing. All the, have you just want to support Marvin saying, yes, I have seen them up to the skate park this afternoon, standing around doing very little. And starting the, starting the motors that I could hear it with.
Well, we haven't had, as far as I understand, we haven't had such a feedback, but if there is a response, it will probably go to the environment committee, but if the environment are not here.
All right.
I don't know whether they gave a response to what I thought was a well forward and press release, which I think has a share of the environment and the mayor. And the town clerk never worked on, so, so I don't think, nothing that I'd say in a meeting anyway, response, but we are where we are, Andy.
Just a minor point, I think the feedback will go to full council, because the decision was taken in full council, rather than, than in the environment committee. Just though, so we don't expect it to come to the environment, not that it matters massively, but.
It was there.
Minor clarification.
Because there was no environment committee, but yeah, when we were there, obviously, sort of that, whether the decision, whether they let it go is really cursory. It's the fact that we'll know the response to probably have a bit of that. So are members happy to agree the recommendations and?
Yeah. Bye.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Margaret, you want to put your proposal, which was seconded by Ryan?
Well, that the hanging basket outside here should either be removed or refreshed urgently, because we need as a town council to be modelling. The way we want others to behave and keep our frontages in good order.
Those in favour? I think that's far better, and maybe that'll be done more.
We've got that.
Right.
Is it, are we removing it or refreshing it, either?
Either, sure.
Yeah, I mean, refreshing.
I've been phoned on it now.
You know, I was, I was just going to offer to refresh it if it takes the strain off of officers' time and money.
There you go.
Oh, you were offering to do it, yeah, okay.
Hanging baskets are actually on the agenda later, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Try kind of do that, Lucy.
Your arms bet the mic off.
Pop my brains free. Right, okay, well, we'll move on to Spring Fair, which, which is on the twenty eighth of April. Report is there, are you leaving on that as well? You can have.
So this will be very soon, remember, last year it was in the cattle pens in the sprinter time, at the end of April, we, I was about to curse it, and so we normally have good weather. And but we've got quite a good range of stalls, including some town council stalls with crafts made from recycled materials. And so that's going to be a, making ones and story sticks from recycled materials. And Nippon City were very kindly donated us some scrap fabric and things to do that with. And yeah, so it looks like it will be a fun event.
I don't want to be picky, but there is no reason.
I was just about to say.
Sorry, sorry, that's a good point.
Called something else now.
May?
May.
May. We're going to have to change that a little bit of paperwork.
We ought to reflect that for the minute, see that.
Yes, we can, absolutely.
Lucy.
That was all I was going to say, wasn't it? Just more pedantic.
I'm just sort of, I don't know, we, we have sometimes an art event out there, do you want it? But we've not proved one this time. Are we, so I can say?
But there's a craft.
We've got a face painting.
And there's a craft there, which is what we normally.
Oh, that, 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 that does exactly, okay.
The two point nine.
Because I think that what I picked up, I don't know whatever members, I don't know how well those things are received, Margaret's been manning a lot of them. You've been got a lot of stores that you're always beyond the art store when I, when you were at the pancake base there.
Light switch on, it was very busy.
It was very busy then, it seems to be really popular.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Sadly, is it so expensive to do anything with my children at the moment, so anything we can do to make that bearable? So are we happy with the report?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to vote to agree it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very much.
Right, I knew the silent action, much discussing, I see it was at the back of the agenda, not that there's anything particularly to worry about. But I thought that we ought to have it a little bit higher up the agenda, just to give it a bit more prominence in the meeting, the one in cycle. Rather than not, because we tend to discuss it over a long meeting. I'm not aware of any, I think of any concern in it, but I do think it's an idea to leave, but do any members want to stand that, Andy?
Just if you can do some kind of a press release, some kind of information, because people are not aware of what's going on on the four, two, one. Where Bolton Road, there's some work going on there, which is really solar panels.
I think that one is, I have to say.
Is it?
Yeah, I think.
It, I thought it was.
You mean the Bolton Farm, it was agreed several years ago.
Yes, but they're now putting in the, they're starting work and they're putting the panels and.
I went on playing savage run down there today, and I think this is disappointing, it's very, it's shut.
Yeah, it is shut. And all the people are curious, they keep asking the question, I thought it was, certainly me telling the disposition, the press release, and the people are, this is what's happening, solar panels there, and that's a problem.
So to my advice would be that the climate emergency action plan report is split up into, it's a, it's a much longer plan and each committee gets a section that's relevant to their committee. So we're only looking at the bit for TCNE here, and I believe planning, planning gets it, so.
No, as long as you can, not who does it, as long as we impart that information.
Shall I speak to the town clerk and get back to them?
Whichever way it is, because people keep saying there are going to be houses there, they're not going to be housed there, it's not going to.
I give the president the commitment that we ask the council, per se, to do something about it for the people.
Yeah, yes, please.
After we've went to town clerk.
Yeah, but we just agree that's what we want.
We should start a lot and.
Andy's right, he can agree as an action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it need to?
Yeah, you said it now, and three, right?
I, I'm very happy to do it, but it can be an action of this committee because.
But that's okay.
But somebody goes.
Well, it does, it's not.
Which I can do, but it's.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be a committee, much of that.
It matters.
We can start, what do you know? We should do it, not stop finishing. Okay, right, in which case, traders' stores and fees, which is, we know that before. Trader's stores and fees, you'll see that there's a report in here. I am correct in suggesting, aren't I, that we've not put these up for a considerable amount of time? These, I'm a trader, it's not going to be static for a very long time.
And so we had a figure of you last year, having not raised them for a very long time, and introduced a standard pricing structure for all of our events apart from Lacey Hill. And so this is the best annual view of that structure. And the proposal in there is, is actually that we keep most of the prices the same, but that we do introduce a new category for food, drink and licensed bars. At, but only at all very least events, so the ones over sort of two thousand attendees.
Excellent.
Thank you. And so I know that the Lacey Hill prices are set at a lower rate, but some of the storeholders do the craft fairs. And so I was just wondering that, like, do we have to keep them at a lower rate for Lacey Hill? If we are, if they, if, you know, you've got people that are making things all year round and going to craft fairs. And I know that Lacey Hill isn't a craft fair, but they do still sell that one. Why it's quite a bit lower than Lacey Hill, it's the same storeholders.
I'm.
Oh, it's that name, I can't remember.
And so the logic there is that, so the maximum fire rate's capacity at Lacey Hill is actually quite small. And it's a lot smaller than you might expect it to be.
Yeah.
And, and so it's quite limited, the number of people that you can have in a building at a time. So the style of events that are held at Lacey Hill are typically very, very family friendly, you tend to have more children, it's typically adults. And then combined with the, that strict number on how many people can be in the building, is that the footfall is a lot better than most of our other events. And certainly, I think we did in the community centre with a much higher footfall, and so that's why it has that lower price. But of course, the committee can discuss it if they'd like to come back.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, you are, because it's a sports ball size, well, that's different from next door. But, yeah, I, I get the science thing, but it's still the sellers and the same wares that they're going to be going selling at another craft fair. But I do get a kind of the low numbers of people attending. So I suppose if there's any way that we can keep an eye on numbers that people are coming through, because we still got staff costs to cover and things like that, that aren't always built in to our events. So, you know, if you've got members staffing, taking the money at door, that's still their wage, we're still paying on Saturday or Sunday, that. So if we could maybe keep an eye or note on the number of people that are coming through the door and just, you know, sort of keep that in mind when it needs to be reviewed again, that's okay?
Okay, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you, just really, more or less Louise has covered most of it, but I think it is different having an event in Lacey Hill than it is in the town centre. And I think, you know, traders generally would probably prefer to go to the town centre because of the footfall. So if we priced it the same, I think we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot probably. And I think if we go to the budgets and look at the income from Lacey Hill events, I think they usually run at a small profit, don't they? We're not losing money on them. And it is, you know, we are in that community and it's a benefit to that community in Lacey Hill. I know other people go as well, but I think it is very different running an event there.
We have a community centre to use anyway.
We do.
And it's a good use of the community centre.
Yeah.
Any members got any other issues around the report? I mean, I think that we all keep reviewing, Councillor Donnelly had mentioned Lacey Hill, just to come back and review that. If we go through the year, if there's something notable on it, but I think Margaret's right. I haven't continued what I feel the event of there is, and it's a little book, and you've got families coming walking to the event, not driving to the event, which shows that most of the families are coming to that estate or they're walking.
Yeah.
We need that.
On the other side of the bypass. Well, there are people who drive to it, and by the way, the family Sunday, that's different, but probably is pretty much where we need to be, I think, now. Are we happy to agree that report? We've all agreed.
I shall abstain because I haven't been. And I, I, I apologise for my tardiness.
All your fridge has arrived?
My fridge has arrived.
Not for safe, I don't have milk. What are you keeping up for cheese?
Cheers. We're on our way to take now.
Sorry.
Sorry, thanks.
That's all. And Fran, we're on our way, so we can't forget your laptop.
I've got a carrier.
Right, I, I just make cheese, um. Fringe week, um.
Mine.
Um.
Mine.
Nine. No, nine, 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 yes, you have to, I did true, if I turned around number eight, but we're called number eight and number nine. But if you're a circle around it, what about, um, number nine, um, fringe week, um, um, which I believe you can, you'll be able to help.
And so fringe week, it's the twenty eighth, or twenty eighth of July, and on Saturday, twenty seventh. Is proposed that we obviously hold a comedy night, which I was saying we did last year. But slightly different is, well, you can see in the recommendation that officers should investigate using the university's Mount Pleasant Campus. Which is the opposite of West Weston, it was actually, when I had gone and done a. Pre-operation, I spoke to the students' union, they were the ones who suggested, actually, it'd be a better or more beneficial. And location for the event because of, obviously, Tannell Mill has a tree in the middle. A few other restrictions, not that we had negative feedback from that, and, and again, like it says on the report. Both locations are available to utilise for this event, so we can use either, and I pens within the date for both, but. It's actually mainly that they, they have put that across, at this moment, we haven't had to do a site visit, so we obviously would do that. And, and it, there's actually a few less costs involved from the university side, and all the costs stay the same from us, so there's no additional charges involved.
Right, um, thank you, I have Lucy and Margaret.
Um, I was just wondering, how often in the past has the comedy night sold out?
That's a good question. Um, I have not, I'm going to be really honest here, as I haven't worked every single comedy night. And I'm not aware of one occasion where it sold out.
Good, Mary. Um, just, the only reason I said that is because obviously, the, having a bigger capacity is great. If fifty more people come.
No.
Um, my, my only concern would be, obviously, Tannell Mill is beautiful, well, it's a nice environment. It's, it's got the tree in the middle, which I think is a feature, um, and. Best Weston, again, without doing a site visit, oh, sorry, the Mount Pleasant Campus, without doing a site visit. We don't know what it's going to look like, um, and obviously, it was also further from the town centre, so people can't just kind of. Go for a meal in town and then head off to the comedy night, so I just think. I'm not voting in favour of either one at the moment, but I just think there are several points that need to be taken into consideration before.
Um, I can bet to Margaret, then I'll bet you that.
Yeah, thank you, um, yeah, I think I agree with what Lucy's just said. I think in, in principle, it's a good venue to have it. I'm not sure how many students are actually going to be living there, so the captive audience. Is probably relatively small up at the Mount Pleasant Campus compared to the, of the Tannell Mill. But I'm not sure in reality how many students actually came, I mean, we've had the two comedy nights there. And I don't think many students have come, even though it's in the heart of the university there.
Yeah.
So that would argue against, um, keeping it there. I did, as far as the tree's concerned, certainly, on the first occasion, it was used as comedy material, wasn't it? Which was quite fun, really, because it is a bit weird having a tree in the middle.
So I think we're being asked to recommend that the officer should investigate doing it, rather than saying we should opt for one or the other. So once you have, so there's a tiny question attached, are you going to bring it back to the committee or are you going to make a decision based on your? Investigation, what is the plan?
Uh, we could bring it back to committee because there's another meeting before, um, the, the fringe week at the end of July, we will meet in June.
Yeah.
And so we would be able to bring it back to committee for a final decision.
But there needs to be a decision.
Yeah, in which case I would propose that we accept the recommendation and the officer should investigate away.
Lisa wanted to speak and then, um, and Ryan wanted to speak too.
Thank you. Um, yeah, it's quite funny really, because when we had the old town hall. Um, the curtains were a thing of, of, of focus material, so, um, I think having the tree in the middle. You're right, it's, it's, it's quite a focus point. Um, the thing about the student union, the, our last comedy event, they were asked for. Um, their kind of opinions on comedians, and then none of them came. They were mainly the normal crowds that, you know, sort of like thirty and above, that we normally get at comedy nights.
Yeah.
We see each attract the same, find out quite a lot of the time. Um, and also keeping it Tannell Mill, when there is a difference in times, I think, from when it actually opened. And so some of them went off to the pub around the corner, they could do that because it's in walking distance, whereas if it's out of town, they're kind of stuck. There, and there's not really, you know, unless it gets to the S O garage, there's no alcohol sold, sold there, but it's, I think, yeah. Going back to trying to keep it as close to the town is better. And also Lucy's point about you've got kind of filler room for it not to look sparse and bare, and it would. Kind of show up if we didn't get enough bums on seats, I think it'd be quite evident. So if there was one, I know that this is just asking officers to go and check it out. And that's fine, but I do think it, it should come back to us for a decision after we've had a report on it, I think that's important. Yeah.
Um, I've got Ryan and Fran, so.
I don't know if it's been seconded.
No, it didn't, well, we've got plenty of time, I think, a little bit, Lisa's basically said, if you, do you have any else on?
No, I was just going to say, if we're, yeah, investigating, I'm, I'm fully in, in support of investigating as well as the sentiments around it. And that.
Um, I think the first comedy night we had at the Tannell Mill. It was, um, they had the film place on, in the, um, Vincent, um, building at the same time, which made.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of confusion, people, and they didn't know where they were going. Um, and also parking down there was an absolute nightmare. Um, for people that were coming, not, not from walking distance. Um, and I think that's, that, those things do need to be taken into consideration, if, if there is something else. That the university's got going on at, on the Tannell Mill, because I believe they have the film place on there all the time now.
Don't clash with that, basically.
They would say it just isn't the capacity for parking around there.
They'll probably be in the fringe programme anyway, um, if they're doing something, um.
Could we ask the uni to open up the football club for parking, maybe, just for that one particular evening?
Um. Well, yeah, the, the old football, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have it on my way.
Yeah, yeah, the old football.
Good thing, and that's like a bit far to walk. A bit of working together, you know, because we've got this beautiful partnership, so.
Um, the bit of the park down across the bridge.
Any other second?
It's been a lot of things to do, um, um, to make it, if that comes in on it, the.
Yeah.
We don't want to spoil the, um, film places. Purely to get in there, because, you know, we definitely don't, more, more things going on to better. Then that's a really positive suggestion. So I think, um, necessarily we have anything to take your part, and not, um, run there and, and leave some major poses, saying, you've got to go back through that again. Um, and what would you propose again?
I just said that we should, um, go with the recommendation and agree that the officer should investigate and bring it back to committee.
No, exactly, but Lisa, all those.
Excellent.
Thank you. I'll move on now, Andy, I'm going to move to ten now, Andy, I think. Other community fair, um, would you, you, you try and go through that report?
Yeah, you can also, so whilst, uh, most of you know, the community fair, and it's one of our annual events, and it happens on the same day. As the Christmas parade, and it happens in the community centre. Um, it's, this year whilst, uh, booking and future planning, we. Found out that it's already been booked by the, uh, Buckingham Bar and Gift Fund, which was. Uh, Terry Bloom built, but he used to do, and he passed it on to, to the local team, actually. And have been traders that they outorganise it. Um, if I don't know, it, it's a really welcomed along, and that event as a whole is, is great and it still runs really well. And but as the recommendation states, that the community fair, we run it in conjunction with them. And for on this occasion for this year, because it's already booked.
Okay, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you, yes, I was a bit, ooh, when I read that, you know, and I thought, well, should we have. Anticipated it and booked sooner, and are we thinking of booking the community centre for twenty twenty five, except the date for the Christmas parade, maybe hasn't been set yet? So we're sort of like, um, chicken and egg a bit, isn't it? But it could be, this is a really positive thing to combine with this event, rather than having two separate events, it could work. For mutual benefit, so it could be that it's a positive thing. But if it does go well, maybe we need to think about whether we do the similar again.
You got it, yeah, uh, Lisa.
Thank you, and it was just to note really that if the, um, charities advertise. That, you know, there's free parking or whatever, that the road closure is still in place, so you can't actually get into the car park till midday. Um, and it's for that reason, I'm really pleased that there's a longer end time. Because when my family came up from London, we couldn't get into the car park, and then they were kind of, a lot of the stores were closing down because. There wasn't anybody really there, so, um, yeah, it's, I'm glad about that, but if that message can be passed on to. Anybody that's going to be advertising out, just remember, car park isn't open.
And we, so in the first conversations we had with, um, the ladies who organised it, we did say that, and we have told them. And they said it's not going to affect their traders and, and, but they're, they're fully aware, they're pretty happy, they, they know the procedure, and they know that, but they are still happy to.
It's mainly customers, I'm thinking.
And they said they were going to do, they were going to include it in their advertising, include it in our advertising, and, and it would be a, um, consistent thing throughout.
Yes.
As in, so it's all, um, it's all in order to everyone.
It's still, you know, early setting up, it's the people coming to it, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just want to say that, um, one of the requirements of, it's a new, different way to me, we actually own the building, don't run the building, and it's, um, and it's, uh. You know, it's not like it isn't common knowledge, but as Margaret says, let's take the positive out of it, um. But we're going to look at it and do it this year and see how it works, it is positive, we'll consider it next year if not. Um, if you can't read, book one.
Right, make a date.
Can we get a date for the parade, um, and we did the parade last week. Um, so, um, so it's really that, although I'm surprised that it has been going on for the best part of thirty four years since the same weekend, that. Somebody didn't think that it was actually going to be the community fair. Um, and around about that time, I didn't make a phone call to say, are you having one? There is probably a case of even, people don't know who are running it, um, or, or miscommunication. Um, which might, I would suggest that, that. What agree that we're implementing, with an amendment, that we allow officers to go and have a conversation about future use of the. Community centre for events, because, um, it obviously is quite strange to me, it has become more strange by the day. That, that we have a community centre which we have quite a lot of investment in, yet we never have a lot of out come from. So I think that needs to be considered, um, because there used to be a. Once upon a time, we used to have sort of events, and we had a series of charges that we did for them and whatever. I remember when, I think Terry and I did an event, and there was, um, we got a bill afterwards for the cleaning. Um, um, and it, it's always been a difficult, um, a difficult affair, I think we do need to, um. Do need to go and have a conversation about it and try and get where we are staying forward, um, it could be that the, there need people working in the office and they don't know. But as Margaret did, let's take the positive out of it and see where we're going, are we happy, members happy to agree to report?
Yeah.
And thank you, Bethany for doing it.
Yep.
Um, um, so, um, the next, I was in this, um, calendar of events, um.
If I could just draw attention to, so right at the end, uh, twenty twenty five date, so the food fair and the good endings fair. Just like adjustment update, but they're both still on Saturdays, on Saturdays.
Yeah.
In February and March, respect.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going there. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine, um. Nobody can comment on this, oh, and they all know they are, nobody can bother them, even on the wrong dates, I think. Um.
No.
Nothing. Yeah, I'm a huge disappointment, Margaret will tell us if something's spelt wrong, or, or letters wrong, that's why I was waiting for Margaret to tell us. She's always been good at popping those sort of things, um, um, I think it's all okay, um.
Yeah.
One thing I would suggest that we, um. Do freshly on this calendar of events that we've got organised, um, um.
It's not going to have publication.
Um, what, we, we've committed a fresh leak, publication, community strategy group, they don't run the committee.
No, no, it's an additional.
Yes.
So I'm proposing, you know, at check, that we do, do a present. And, and that we communicate.
Additional to, I don't think not to do well.
Yeah, you know, um, yes.
Yeah.
Um, this is the committee, that's a separate committee.
I know, I've been.
Um.
Got your eyes shut, so I don't.
Anyway, I tell you, I'm knocking. No, we agree that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And agree to report.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and about, we're going to vote, you're going to vote. Right, number twelve, um, reviews, um, you can go through those. Um, we did hang out.
And so it was on the fifth, which seems forever ago now. And despite the sort of renews we ran before, it was still really well attended, and, and anyone that came. Be back would be critical, and again, they enjoy you to. The races as a whole, but also the art provisions and, and things like that as well. It's lovely to have, um, board by Jim as well, it's, um, the big room session, uh, the kids. From what I saw, feeling a bit about, and they, they would be happy to, you know, follow on and do things like that in the future. I think that, and so just from a, from a little bit of safety point of view as well, it's more geared up and ready for me to go. And he gave it to them as well, I think it, it breaks a little bit of that ice, there's some, there's some people who just, you know, kind of. Be included and know who they're with, in especially in their age groups. And, and as you can see, you can see the winners, some of the underfives, six to eleven, twelve to seventeen. Adults, three day race teams, and then a walking race, it's wonderful, um, and, uh, obviously, then the prizes were all related to those.
Um, comments, um, well, okay, my, um, please.
Fran.
Fran, and then, and then, um, um, Ryan.
Um, yeah, it was, it was a great event, um, and really, I thought it was one intended, um, considering the rate. The walking race, though, it was really quite difficult to tell which ones are actually still walking, which ones had to have broken into a big, big shot. I think possibly a, um, yeah, it, it possibly is looking at a little bit.
Wide.
Vividly for next time because it didn't really work out.
Must have one foot on the floor at all times.
But, but you've, you've got to judge that then, if you're looking, you're trying to look at it like eight children and.
I've all got your walking.
But it was, it was, it was, it was good, maybe a hopping race or something.
I'm glad to see it was well attended, I do apologise, I couldn't attend this year for work reasons, but however, um, I'm. Confident that next year that I can win the adults' race. And thank the officers for this report.
And I would say on my own point of view, I thought that actually, one of the nicer events, there was, it was all just families this year. Um, there wasn't any additional competition from interesting parties, the kind of thought made for a much nicer event, um. You know, um, it was sort of really well attended from the government point of view, and. And also lots of thanks to the staff and thanks to Derek and Margaret for doing the art event. Which I think added something when I came out of there, children still wanted to sit in there um doing drawings and paintings longer after it's been done. And um and thank them for what they did. And we were asked to scuttle off then to open the skate park. But um um after that, but um so we didn't stay around long. We've got to apologise, but thank you very much. And we'll bring on to the food fair. Um which is before. Um.
And so again, uh pre-planned took place on April four, February. So it's the same format. But it was definitely the eleventh year, but because of COVID being this year, so it was our second anniversary. So we wanted to do, we added a a competition and the bucking backs competition into it just for an extra little added sum. And but on the, on the main basis of the event, uh it was well attended by traders and another record breaking retention for missing players. So each year it's quite nice that we keep building on on that attendance and it keeps growing. So that's pretty good. And W R also provided professionals like they usually do. We've had a lot of retaining traders because they really, really wanna be here every year. And a few new ones who again, from them, they was, they said, you know, put us down, we wanna do it again. Lovely that you've contacted us. Um we also do the Buckings favourite bit competition at food fair, which again add more entries. And so over two hundred entries this year. Uh lots of updated food maps were handed out. Conversations, the volunteers obviously on the stall, uh which was staff and councillors on the day. Lots of conversation just generated, again, the feedback of obviously really lovely restaurants, really lovely um at the thing uh in the town, which is always nice to hear. And again, the winners for that um were Prago, Red Cherry Gold and Cornwall Place Kitchen. So some have one, some haven't. So it's, it's nice to incorporate new ones. And uh Mo and I actually went and did a little bit of trophies and that was all publicised and lovely. So again, they were all happy as well. And so, so yeah, can't wait, isn't it fun?
I think it was excellent. Um as always, really, really well um organised, really well attended. Um I think it was near two thousand people came through the doors and it was, it was um, it was quite amazing. Um there was some, some mumblings again about whether we can do it twice in a year. Um so um that's um. Well, the the traders seem to be um up for it. It is a really successful, successful event. Um so I think that's, that's possibly something that um um not this year because we haven't budgeted for anything and it's not in the diary, but really in the future. Um whether we can, we can do it um in the autumn as well. Um it might be, might be quite nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, disappointing that you actually made about the restaurants in Buckingham. Yes, they are thriving. And there's some very good reports on, uh not that I'm promoting them, China Cottage, but the reason is Shandu was sold and the people who owned Shandu or China Cottage took all the recipes and they shared with China Cottage. So.
No, it's on the back of.
You told me last week, wasn't it?
Yeah, I told you last week.
Yeah.
I guess.
So, so it's not, yeah.
But that's so, sorry, um.
Somebody else in board can.
About twelve years ago, that Kenny came out and showed you.
Oh, right.
Um but it's more recent than that, I didn't know that. So, yeah.
So, yes, so China Cottage, really, Shandu, the old Shandu. And that's what the, that's, that's, that's a lot of people are coming far and wide to, we used to go to Shandu. Now coming to China Cottage, but ready, it's like cheap already. And, and yeah.
It's the man, I didn't know that, I see so.
Also that that the other ones shut, isn't it, I think?
By the gym, yeah. They have issues, yeah.
Um yeah, again, I just, so I did the door for a couple of hours and it was fantastic. And it was really nice to hear people talking positively and everyone was leaving, they'd bought stuff, they'd eaten stuff. There was a really nice atmosphere. Yeah, and I spoke to some of the traders and yeah, this is great, like it's buzzing in here. Um no, just, yeah, it's really, really nice showcase of how well we can do an event.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, thank you. And what would you eat, Ryan?
Oh, uh I, I, no, I had nothing to say.
My, I attended, went down and it was all fun and all. And I picked up a load of casework and and nearly lost my voice. But yeah, I mean, it was interesting. Um and I think the outside stores are very busy as well. Um um which, which you don't see when you're in the community centre. You come down to buy a bit from the outside stores and um and they sit and stand and talk and do things and whatever. So um yeah, I think it's, um thank Bethany and everyone for involved and what councillors are intending. It was, I know I was there mostly that, I think not all the day, how many councillors actually come and did the short stint, which is really nice. And um and you get to see what's going on. And it 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 will be hard whatever year, next year, eleventh year next year. But um when we started, I can remember when we proposed doing it originally, everyone said, oh, that'll never work. Um and it's been quite.
It did.
And it did. And remember we were having people saying, oh, well, that worked, but no one will come to that. And it's been a really successful event. Um.
Um I was just gonna say about the Buckingham Bakes competition. Um I think that um it was, it was quite disappointing, the number of en- entries. But it did generate quite a lot of um interest. And I think that going forwards, if we were to do that again, we would get more entries. So there was quite a few people said, I didn't know what was going on.
I won't win if someone else sent this.
And actually on that, there there would have been uh more entries on the day, but the people, some of them just got up, yeah. They got involved, something had happened family wise, so they they couldn't, which is understandable.
Yes, um so we're happy to um bring recommendations with support. And can we record our thanks to all the staff and all the actors who presented in a year of equal um Augusta? Um and I think what is, and actually I, everyone seemed to recover from Christmas and wanted to do something, so. That's really good.
It was a beautiful day.
We've got a vote on this to the.
Thanks very much.
But um okay, in which case, Easter event, um uh which was Sam obviously organised the Easter event. Who's gonna take us through that? I know.
I, I, yeah. Um so Sam organised the Easter event up at Lexus Sports and Community Centre. It's sort of, oh dear, are you there?
Ah, fine.
Is this what we're in the table?
Yeah, we're in the table.
We've not recovered from Saturday.
So there were fourteen craft and gift stalls and and there was also the committee room was a children's sort of fashion activity room. And so there's lots of free activities for children to do. There were eighty seven adults attending and at least eighty five children. And the event went very well, everyone was very happy. And they had, I think, some, certainly for some people, the highlight was Bluey, who was a big favourite with toddlers. Um yeah, so that was uh somebody dressed up as Bluey, had a great time. Um and uh and yeah, it did make a a slight profit even then. Nice, well done.
Um, um.
I was just going to say that it clearly seemed a happy event. And it is another eh or another piece of evidence that these craft um opportunities for children are actually really popular. Hmm. So a lot of children seem to enjoy them and it is something, it's great because it is something free for fam- virtually free for families to do, yes.
There was a very small dog thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Free.
Once you're in, you don't get to have more.
Okay, some of the things we're doing. And there's a theme that runs through here. And actually, it's a great thing, I think, part two really is, really um. There is a real zest out there for reasons to achieve events, doesn't children and that they can attend. Because the economic climate as it is now, families haven't got the spare money, they need the money for whatever. So I think it's something that um perhaps I'm quite agreeing here. So I'd like to um put the point to all council that there is a need for them to look in the net financial year of growing this because the economic situation is getting improved overnight. And um and they need to be mindful to this, um what's going on. Because we're, we're in this committee, we're all very active members in the committee, but lots of members of council aren't aware of this. So I'd agree that the board, with the recommendation, council that they note the amount of time we're putting in and they're up there, we're getting from parents attending events with children when we start looking for a preset next year. Because um it's about giving something back and supporting families um through the sort of vulnerable financial time through. Um and that's basically how I word it, um but not the vulnerable, but the but that we let council note the amount of debt that we recommend that they consider important enough. But then we're setting meeting to consider how we are to pay funds for it. I don't think we could do any of that. Do they get agreement in this end of the year? But they know that the importance of this. So when we go through the year and set our budgets um next financial year, um and they certainly say, oh, well, why are you putting that in? We've already noted that and thought it was a jolly good idea at the beginning of the year. I know you have.
No.
Doesn't mean you can't do it. So if you can vote against it, it's fine. And so I propose that we do that, so that I'm conscious that we're on a small committee. Many of the members of the county council do not come to events or attend events or do not um sit on this committee. And I think it's important that we get that message across to the other councils, the importance of what's going on. But I'd propose that for the chair, it's not secondary report.
Sorry, could I just clarify what we propose?
The proposal's in the chair, obviously, that we agree the report.
Yeah.
And we make the recommendation to council to notice how many of the events we do now for young children, how well well attended they are. And that they should know that when they're setting preset next year. That's all I'm saying.
Can I add something to it? Because I think it's wider than that. It's the uh offering of kids activities within all of our other events that we do, like the Christmas lights switch on, Pancake Day. Because it's, that's what we're hearing tonight, is that those craft things are really popular. So I don't think it's that we're providing, the the children's events that we're providing is that as a whole, all of our events, if we're including that stall, our craft stall, that is really popular. And to keep that going, rather than saying, well, it's Christmas lights switch on, why you, why have you got tent for kids? It's because it's really popular and has been and it works.
What additional words would you add to the short brief?
All right, say yours again.
Would you like me to repeat? That'd be okay. So I have, so agree the report.
Yeah.
If everyone is happy, we could deal with that separately.
Yeah.
And then we have make a recommendation to full council to note how many events are done for young children and how well attended they are. And that they should know this when setting preset next year.
Okay, so it's the events for young children because it's the wider part, is that they're in, we're including activities for children within all of our events, not just that we're putting on the young children's events.
Mar- Margaret.
Can I just suggest, we make it very explicit, they're free events for children, which is, that's the.
Thank you, Margaret.
That's what you've got now.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh are we happy to sort of?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm. The whole point of the committee is to get the wording agreed by the committee.
See what you've got down now.
Um if we're happy that we haven't had a second one yet.
Yeah, but we. Just get the wording, like Margaret put in free events.
Okay.
And literally sort of hand up on the right hand side, I'm conscious to take it everybody's point of view.
And um, okay, so at the moment, I've just got to note how many free events we have for young children, how of how well attended they are. But Lisa, did you want to add something about that they are included in other events as well?
Yeah, so it's where, yeah, where we've got these free children's activities at our other events that we do and they're popular. So to keep that going, so somebody said, why are you having that? Uh there's nothing to do with Christmas lights switch on. We can then quantify it and say, but it's really popular. And that's been noted in, I think, that for council. Can I just make a wording suggestion in progress? Um so how many free children's events and activities for children at ongoing events?
Hmm.
And how well.
Yeah.
Um.
So we'll get it discussed again, because somebody will say why you mentioned it.
Yeah.
In which case, the committee then can discuss the importance of it. Because I'm conscious that you're all very great people, you attend all our events to support. I'm conscious that not many of the councillors through our arms can attend those events. They aren't counting out to events, not counting for events at events. It's important that I get opportunity to know the reason. So.
So I'll read it again. So a recommendation to full council to note how many free children's events and activities for young children are other events. And how well attended they are. Um that, should I add in there that T C N organisers, I think.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm showing that.
Yeah.
Um and how well attended they are and that they should know this when setting the preset next year. Yeah.
I just, and the reason I'm doing that is we can call on that later day.
Yeah.
Um and they've already come, so we know nothing about that, you've already discussed it.
Yeah.
Um and it just always takes a head.
Yeah, and we said tonight that they're all popular.
Yeah, exactly. And we're happy to breathe that word, you know, no, it's it, you're gonna second it.
Yeah.
And then with the men did it and then we're back. I'm happy with that. It it was.
Other houses, we got there in.
Don't you think that, that we remember now.
We went to Tindric about it.
No, you've got a lot of people into this talk, but we can't. Andy, sorry, Andy. Um right. This was a short, long entertainment.
Uh so this is a terrible report. I've had a, had a message. I don't know if anyone went down to see the Easter bunny.
I saw the Easter bunny.
The Easter bunny was apparently very popular.
I like you.
I've got a picture of the Easter bunny.
So over the sort of roughly two weeks, they had over three hundred visitors taking part in the Easter bunny at the various and and the town centre trail, Easter trail. And so the Easter bunny was very much enjoyed by adults and children, uh and took their basket of chocolate treats. And the face centers are very busy as well, um had a, had a steady queue. Um the trail had a lot of people taking part, particularly at the beginning, but also through the week. Um and the T S E had that they had more than one person say to them that they found shops that were new to them while they were taking part in the trail.
That's the point.
Or more to time, yeah.
The chair can't be on that then. What I did notice that the toilet information were actively involved in that then. Which, which is noting that that they, that some of the staff and sort of major coming out and being involved in sort of bringing people in doing that, which is really cool.
Yeah.
It also shows that, I don't know if you picked up the, it's not even on the agenda, but there was quite a lot of promotion on ads in from the tip and toilet information, this recent thing on social media. Please try and follow that because it's quite um it's quite encouraging, actually, the amount of stuff that is done from the toilet information centre, the amount of how it links in with people. And they'll start coming there. Um it's just the matter that they are working really, really hard. And um and they're punching one above their weight um in Buckinghamshire. Um compared to what Buckingham did, there's this, probably they get more icks on their site than what Buckinghamshire council does.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in fact, that more people like Buckingham and Castle paper, so they do Buckinghamshire council. So uh it might mean we're doing something good on communications.
Yeah.
Um well, it's interesting enough for people to like, which is probably, but.
Yeah.
So just on that, so I feel to me, um we should record in the minute, our thanks to everyone involved. And why I just like. And why I just like to sort of throw it in, and I did enjoy the money. Um, as everybody else did. And the gang, it was, um, where we are.
That sounds like you've eaten it.
I am, I am having culture, but I cannot eat big blurry bung. I can eat small bungies, but I'm not eating that. Uh, this is gonna go nowhere. Yeah, if you've really done me now, Andy, thank you much. All right, uh, we were on market entertainment. We've done that right. Um, action.
Sorry, can I just, uh, uh, sorry, clear the market and same plans throughout the year?
Uh, so then we'll be doing the fringe and then we, if the weather's good enough, we'll do some over the holidays as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. I wonder what to mention because I was down the other day, um. And I, we had, how's our busking going? Um, are we having our busking in the spot?
Um, there was somebody this week.
Yeah.
Although not in the spot that we allocated, he was on the, sitting on the yellow, uh, sand bucket, but that's that's okay, it's not a big deal. He needed, he needed all the instruments he's got.
Would it be appropriate, um, because we've got them, hopefully gonna get some dry weather coming up, um, but we suggest through the committee on market entertainment that we do a bit of promotion if there is an opportunity to do busking in Buckingham. Um, to attract people in. But I, I, I enjoy listening to buskers. And somehow that noise, music in the town just gives you a lovely feeling. Just to make sure that we don't lose our public communities with buskers. Um, when travels to different places. I propose we ask the doctors to do that, is that acceptable?
Yeah, yeah.
And does that agree? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I don't do it anyway, I'm sure, but, um, we say. Right, we're on action this, that sounds like a mission, doesn't it? Um. Mostly it is on, ongoing. Um, is there anything members wish to do, um. Bring up, um, from the answer list. But mercy is actually ongoing, some of it we're waiting for, um. Strategy which will come out through the, um, um, town plan group. So that we can't ask for that until they do that. But that needs to come back here for us to see, I think, once they get to that. Um.
Ryan, just a quick one, uh, have we had any, um, update on the community board with the youth council? Have they selected a venue yet or is there not?
There is a running going at the moment at, um, uh, the centre, I believe.
Excellent.
Uh, I think they were in talks to possibly have a second centre. I'm not sure if that one's got started yet or not. I can give you an update when I have one.
Thank you, that kind of the next committee.
I've got it on there.
It literally just says.
Very close and ch- checking, yeah.
Okay, well, we've done that. Um, but we'll know that before, okay? Um, outside bodies, have you got anything you need to say, Daniel? Um, from my point of view, if you hadn't had opportunities to look at the, if you want on planning. Um, you would have seen it, it's the, um, free training of the town. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, please don't look at it, um.
There's an event in the library tomorrow, I believe.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, thank you. Where I was really regarding. But yeah, there's an event there. If you, if you've read the consultation, you want to give any personal feedback on it. Um, it's quite an extensive document, although it was right that it was dealt with planning. It's right under the term of revenue to the council. It is this committee which many of the outcomes and effects will be if we were to put the community on in a wide range from the community. Um. I have put a written question which I do believe has been accepted. Um, for a democratic service, did I hear differently? And because I do think it's important that we, there's a question that needs to be asked. Um, that's about Buckinghamshire council. Um, and you will, and I think that that's the way we, we, we need to do. Also, from my point of view, I haven't been aware of the outcome of the parking consultation, um, which you realise is a parking consultation which was done, which we ordered by. Which will affect the town centre, the trade, everything else. And, um, my understanding is that, that that hasn't actually been the outcome, that it hasn't been defined and it, it will probably be a leaded decision. So we do need to, um, monitor that because the way the town centre works with our markets and train, the outcome of that might be such where it is. I don't think we're even at a position that they're likely to come back to, not us to Buckinghamshire council, they haven't come back to us. Um, I would have hoped they'd come back to the town council at some point, or they may have a decision to see if there's any way of making, um. Recommendations now they perceive, because I am worried that any change to negative, any other thing around parking always puts people off, whether it really economically puts them off or not. And the town centre and the economic to the town centre is not, it's like that, isn't it? You know, um, all these little things are pretty obvious, but they're just two comments, um, what I, I know, um. But, um, as Captain Davis said, that there is an opportunity tomorrow to get involved in that consultation. So you're free, you're in the town centre. Go down and have a few pennies worth. I think, I know the mayor and I know Davis is probably gonna go down, I might even make a.
Now that I've remembered.
We have, we have a meeting at ten, don't we?
You're, you're meeting at ten.
Do it.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
I'm gonna go at a time that you weren't there.
And just to say, I think it's really important, unfortunately I was unable to stop my shift and actually start work then on ten. Um, but I think it's really important that as many people, as many councillors and people from the town as possible turn up and kind of a show of force to say, you're not just gonna quietly slip this one by us. This is gonna have a massive impact. Um, you can't just control, put blanket regulations on what people do in and around our town. And across Buckinghamshire, yeah.
But, but we are no power over. Anyway, I think we are where we are, members are available. I know staff who probably visit the eight part again, but that's probably longer than we needed to be on that, but they're, they're both relevant to town centre. Um, we've done a press releases, haven't we? We've done, we, do you mind me what press releases through to three?
Uh, Calumford events.
Calumford events and, and we were going to do another one one week, wasn't we?
No, we talked for another one and, um, but that I would also tell Clark about in Australia.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. In which case we'd cover those things, um, if all the standard things go out. Um, which can thank everyone for meeting now, uh.
Thank you, Chairman.
And we have the chairman's items, but we will, um, move on to date at the next meeting, which is on the third June. Which case, um, under the recommendation that the item scheduled, we love government that Act nineteen seventy-two, the foreign item will be liked to discuss, um, in private session. So, um, are we agreed to move into private session?
Yeah.
Agree with that on that. Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll, we'll private session.